I invite you to join with me in the invocation. Dear Lord, the month of May is a time of prayer for those that protect us. We pray and remember the veterans that have given their lives in order that we may live in a country of free speech and a life of our choosing. We pray for the officers lost last week in Charlotte and their families. We pray for the officers and first responders that continue to serve daily in their community. Most importantly, we celebrate the Lord, our great protector, with a day of prayer for our nation both here and nationally. Let us come together before God to show our unity in our country in a time of need for spiritual guidance shown to us by our Creator. There is no greater act than to come to the Lord in prayer. Amen. Counsel, next I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2412, recognizing Brandon Bean.
Sub moved.
Motion by Councilmember Aldridge, second. By Councilmember Dry, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. We have the honor tonight of recognizing a man who has done great things wherever he's been. He's successful in all that he does. But Brandon, if you would meet me up front in these chairs. Brandon, we talk about your success and we think about what you did in Charlotte. Well, we need you back. Things have not gone great since you left, but I think your last season was a Super Bowl season, one before that. So, we thank you for all you did in Charlotte and look forward to maybe one day you will come back.
Amen.
And where you're at now, Buffalo has been very successful and I think you're the key reason for that. You've drafted well, you've picked up a lot of creation, so you've had a great career and I know you've got a long ways to go. Resolution 2412 honoring Brandon Bean. Whereas Brandon Bean was born and raised in Albemarle and graduated from South Stanley High School in 1994, Mr. Bean went on to graduate from UNC Wilmington in 1998 with a major in Communication Studies and minors in Computer Science and Leadership Studies. And whereas Mr. Bean worked in various roles with Carolina Panthers, including being named Assistant General Manager in 2015, which was the same year the Panthers had a 15-1 record and played in the Super Bowl. And whereas in May 2017, Mr. Bean was hired as General Manager of the Buffalo Bills. The Bills have made the playoff in six out of his seven seasons since Bean has been hired and they have won four consecutive AFC East Division Championships. And whereas, in 2018, Mr. Bean was named Distinguished Alumni of UNC Wilmington. And whereas in 2020, Mr. Bean was inducted into Stanley County Hall of Fame and was named NFL Executive of the Year. And in 2021, Mr. Bean won the Jack Corrigan Award for Best Assisting the Media. And whereas Mr. Bean has helped charitable causes, including the United Way, Feed More of Western New York, and the Children's Hospital in Buffalo. Now therefore be it resolved, the Mayor and City Council of the City of Albemarle recognize and honor Brandon Bean for his contributions throughout his career, his outstanding service to the National Football League, and setting an example for students and young people from Stanley County. And be it further resolved, the City Council of Albemarle does hereby adopt this resolution this the sixth day of May, 2024. Counsel, I'm gonna give each of you a chance to say something before I give Brandon the microphone. Mr. Aldridge.
All right, start with me. So, Brandon, congratulations, man. Thank you so much for all that you've done. We go way back. We've known each other for a long time and you represent our community well. You've had a ton of success in the NFL, but the most important thing I'll say about Brandon is you're an awesome guy and you always go out of your way to make somebody else's day. Anytime I've ever reached out, you've always called me right back. And so, I wish you nothing but the very, very best. Keep up the good work and I'm proud of you, buddy.
Brandon, I never had an opportunity to know you personally, but I've followed your career. I continue to follow your career and I'd like to thank you for being the role model that you are for the young people of Stanley County. Thank you for what you've done.
Mr. Townsend.
Brandon, if the question was asked, what good can come out of Stanley County? For the awesome work that you're doing with the Buffalo Bills and what you've done for the Carolina Panthers. It was almost a year ago today, I think, whenever you was inducted into the Stanley County Sports Hall of Fame, we asked you to just continue making us proud. Thank you. Keep up the good work.
Ms. Hall.
So Brandon, those awards I just said to you, Dexter, you said to him, just what I had said to him, if you ever wonder if there's anything good that can come out of Stanley County, or Southern Stanley County, for some people saying, thank you, thank you for what you've done, thank you for remembering from where you came, okay, and coming back to see us, not just your mama, but all of us. Thank you so much.
Mr. Whit.
Just kind of echo what was said, I've known your mom for years. I met you last night, but I have followed you for the years, over the years. I'm a college football fan, semi-pro, you know, fan, but it's always great to see somebody from Stanley County make their name nationally and especially, as Dr. Bramlett said, being a role model to younger kids, that is so important. And we do need some help in Charlotte over there if you, if you ever have a way of doing that, but congratulations and we look forward to watching you in years to come.
Mr. Dry.
Brandon, it's so important, and you don't hear this much, is family values. You come from a wonderful family, very strong in all aspects. Your mom and I went to school together and meeting good times and, but I look at your accomplishments and I look at the accomplishments of your family and each of you have had great success and I think that is something that is never given. You earn it and when you earn it, the respect that you get can never be taken away. You're a good role model for a lot of young people. That's a difficult thing in its own right, but you've been given a gift and I think you will share it well. God bless you.
I just want to congratulate you on your professional accomplishments, but I also want to thank you for your charity, the work you've done with charity, not only here, but in New York also.
Brandon, I'm gonna give you the microphone.
Well, first off, Mayor, thank you. This is a great honor and I really appreciate you guys all in the council for thinking of me in this honor. And when my mom called and said that Bill had reached out, you know, I was, I think it was January when she first called and I was just like, let's figure this out, I want to get back home and do this, but it's always fun to be back in Stanley County and it brings back memories. Growing up in Norwood and Albemarle all together, just today was, I got in my car and drove around. I don't get back here a lot, but it's, you just instantly get in the car and you ride around on this road or that road, things pop in your head and, and all the life lessons that I learned from here, starting with my parents and my sister who are here, I wouldn't be in this seat without them. And it's to be able to share this honor with them is the most important thing for me and all my success is how I was raised and where I was raised and that goes beyond them, that goes to the community, the teachers, I've got coaches here, I've got family members of coaches here, and I love to stay in contact with them and I've seen some the last couple of days that couldn't make it to this, but it's just, it's really heartwarming for me to always be connected to Stanley County and I try to carry the values that I've learned from all the great people here with me to Carolina when I was with the Panthers and then now up to Buffalo and we're just trying to get as many Bills fans as we can down here until, until the Panthers, you know, decide to hire me back, but I love seeing the Bills Mafia down here and, and I also have had a lot of Stanley County people, I've been there seven years now, come up and see me and so, if anybody in Stanley County's in Buffalo, please stop by, please come to a game and we'll welcome you into the Bills Mafia. So, thank you all again, this is a great honor and I really appreciate this.
I know you've got several family members here, let's get them to come up for a picture. Brandon, I ask you to stay up here and let's get counsel out here to take a picture. Brandon, before you take off, we've got a couple of bags for you. Thank you.
Looks like Panther blue paper there. That's right.
Jay Boles here? Come on up. Okay? How many utility staff do we have? Come on. This is a proclamation recognizing Water Week. Whereas water is a valuable natural resource and whereas water serves a vital role in daily life, serving as an essential purpose to help hydration and hygiene needs for the quality of our life and our citizens enjoy. And whereas water delivers public health protection, fire protection, support for our economy, and the quality of life we enjoy. And whereas, the work performed by our city staff ensures the safety and quality of our drinking water. Whereas, the work performed by our city staff ensures the maintenance of the infrastructure relied upon to transport high-quality drinking water from its source to consumers' tastes. And whereas, City of Albemarle serves a regional water supplier, providing millions of gallons of water each day to our community and neighbors. And whereas, our city staff treats all received environmental quality to exceed standards acceptable to discharge the waters in public for recreation. And whereas, we are all stewards of the water infrastructure upon which current and future generations depend. And whereas, all people can help protect our source waters from pollution and practice water conservation. Now therefore be it claimed, the City of Albemarle recognizes May 5th through 11th, 2024, as Water Week. Next is approval of minutes, consider approval of the minutes for the 41524 regular meeting, 41524 closed session. Do I have a motion? So, the motion by Councilmember Dry. Second by Councilmember Townsend, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Next, we're gonna move into public hearing. Each of these public hearings will have time limits. First, the staff will introduce and then the applicant will be given an opportunity to speak and then anyone else that cares to speak. The applicant and the, will be given 10 minutes to speak and then everyone else will be given three minutes to speak. We're gonna start with 5A, public hearing, incentive resolution for Project Timber 24 and Ms. Lindsay Almond will make the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Michael, Mayor Pro Tim Hall, and City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight regarding a proposed expansion project. I'm requesting your support for a business development grant totaling 30% of taxes on new investment for five years. The company is a family-owned and operated manufacturer and distributor of fabricated aluminum and tempered glass products. This project will result in 36 new full-time jobs with benefits at a salary above the county median wage, a minimum of $1,475,000 will be invested in new equipment and machinery, and the company will expand its current facility by 5,000 square feet. It would be my pleasure to answer any questions you may have about the project and I appreciate your consideration of the request.
Counsel, have any questions with staff? This is a public hearing, anyone who cares to speak for or against, please come forward.
Motion closed public hearing, second.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend closed public hearing, second by Councilmember Aldridge, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve Resolution 24 for Project Timber 24? Motion by Councilmember Bramlett, second by Councilmember Aldridge, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Moving on next to 5B, this is zoning map amendment 2403, the amendment requests to rezone 4.52 acre portion of tax parcel 26452 North 3rd Street to residential office. Kevin Robinson will present.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay. This is, let me zoom in here a little bit. This is ZMA 24-03, the tax record is 26452. As the mayor mentioned, this is 4.52 acres. They've requested to be subdivided from a 5.74 acre parcel, which is located between North 2nd Street, North 3rd Street on the east side, and Webb Street running to the north. You can see the property right here. This is what it's proposed to be subdivided off, there is a industrial, light industrial building there right now, proposing to keep that and to subdivide this portion of property around it, basically the undeveloped portion of the tract. The applicant is BTR Communities Group and Bill Scantlin, owner right now is 785 Sun Bun Inc., Novozulhak. Right now, the existing zoning is split zone between LID and R8 Neighborhood Residential. What they've requested is RO, residential office reuse, and their statement is to more effectively utilize vacant property for future residential uses through multifamily development. Residential use in keeping with the future land use map for this area, RO is specifically requested to maintain conformity with surrounding properties. Again, the major, primary difference between RO and R6 is that RO does allow office uses, would not be applicable really in this case with them doing apartments here, but RO also is limited in height to 35 feet rather than R6 in, in our, 50 feet in R6.
Do that one more time, do the height.
It's 50 feet in R6, it's 35 in RO, they're gonna do RO, so it will be, the height will be somewhat, will be lower than could be allowed otherwise. Existing use is vacant right now, it's undeveloped for the most part. The proposed use is multifamily, proposing around 50 units right now. Water, sewer, and power are readily available to the site. There is a sewer easement that runs through the western side of the property. The property does have some moderate slopes on the western side, more severe slopes present on the eastern side. It's partially cleared with mature vegetation encompassing the remainder, it's not located in a floodplain and no other significant, significant environmental impacts are on this property. To the north of this property is GHBD and R8, the east, R8 and RO, also R8 and RO to the south, Hartzell Funeral Home is, R8 to the west, single-family residential. You can see the current zoning map here, this is the LID, this is the R8, this doesn't show up, shows up better for you guys, there are some RO properties right here, down here and down here, as well as a little bit further off, it's a pretty common zoning district in this area. The future land use plan classifies apparent tract as neighborhood residential, which is typically supportive of R8, R6, and on up to R4 residential densities. This is the property right here. Actually, this should come up, it's right here. This is Hartzell Funeral Home down here.
So stop there one moment. So the neighborhood residential.
In the brown here.
Right.
Yeah.
Give me, what did you just say, it's usually R?
It's typically consistent with R8, R6, and R4 districts.
But not RO?
RO also, RO is basically the same thing as R8, but it's, it allows for office use whereas R6 doesn't and it's, but it's also shorter in height on the multifamily.
Okay.
The density is the same overall. We've got the RO zoning district definition there and the neighborhood residential future land use map classification as well on there. The RO requires a minimum lot size per unit of 1,500 per a multifamily unit in a development. This equates to about 29 units per acre maximum that you could do on a property. The proposed parcel size is subdivided to four point, is subdivided, once subdivided will be 4.52 acres. Therefore, the maximum number of proposed units for this development would be 131. Of course, that's very high, you're not gonna achieve that on most properties with this one in particular, but the topography and everything, they're proposing around 50 units. So the density is around 38% of the maximum allowed. Overall, staff believes there are merits to this requested rezoning and find it to be generally consistent with the future land use map. Planning Board unanimously recommended approval of the requested rezoning with the statement of consistency at its last meeting. We have included those statements below here for you as well.
Counsel, have questions with staff? This is a public hearing, anyone who cares to speak for or against, please come forward.
Make the public hearing be closed.
Motion by Councilmember Hall, closed public hearing.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Townsend, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Counsel, what's your wishes, zoning map amendment 2403? Motion by Councilmember Bramlett, zoning map amendment 2403, second by Councilmember Whit, further discussion.
Is that with the consistency statement?
With the consistency statement, Mr. Bramlett? With the consistency statement. Further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Move on to item 5C, zoning map amendment 2404 for zoning to rezone 116 Morningside Avenue from GHBD to R6. Kevin Robinson will introduce.
Thank you, Mayor. This is tax record 20553 116 Morningside Avenue, it is .51, approximately one-half acre. Give you a little bit of a background, this is, this is East Main Street right here and then this is the backside of Food Line and that shopping center right here, so this is the road that comes down from there. This is a picture of the current building that was here, I believe this was a daycare center most recently, 100% on that, but I think that's the last thing it was.
You've spent a lot of time.
Yeah, it's been, I know it's been several things, I couldn't remember what it was last, but yeah, it's been, so it is, it's been zoned, commercial GHBD to allow for some of those uses there. The applicant for this is Sangster Investments LLC. As it exists, it's owned GHBD, General Highway Business District proposes R6 Urban Residential. The applicant's statement is the property was previously used as a hair salon in previous years, however due to its location, it's been a challenge to secure other businesses in the building. The property is located within walking distance of a major shopping district, which has more visibility, parking, and traffic. These factors present a challenge for advertising invisibility and we believe it will cause consistent turnover with tenants and small businesses. It's only the, it's also the commercial building, only commercial building on a quiet residential street, they believe they can create an affordable housing solution in the space, which will properly, be properly maintained and managed. So yeah, correct salon. Multifamily is a proposed use, approximately five to seven efficiency apartments are what's proposed there at this time. Water, sewer, and power are readily available to the site. Property has a moderate slope from front to rear, we didn't see any evidence of streams or wetlands on site. Property is fairly cleared with some scattered mature trees. Property is not located in regulated floodplain and no other significant environmental impacts were evident there. And this is the property right here.
So as you see. I understand what you were saying earlier, he could build up 50 foot tall there?
In R6, yeah, technically you could, you could build up to 50 feet in R6. There's some additional setbacks that come along with that. And I think it would probably be, I highly doubt that you would see anything that tall on a half acre lot, max I think you can be able to put there's 12 or 13, 12 to 13 units, so wouldn't anticipate a 50-foot building there. What you see in the pink is GHBD, yellow is R8 down here, R6 is urban residential, this was rezoned, I think, two to three years ago to allow for, it was rezoned from GHBD and to R6, so there's a kind of precedent for rezoning some of these properties that are coming down into the neighborhood.
And what, where is that one again?
That's on Crowell.
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 Crowell, yeah.
The 2028 land use plan also calls for neighborhood residential here, which is in the brown right here and the property in question is actually right here. As I mentioned, this is approximately a .517 acre tract of land, the tract contains approximately 3,300 square foot structure. Overall, staff believes that this is consistent with the future land use map classification of neighborhood residential. And Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend approval of the requested rezoning with the consistency statement at its last meeting. We've also included those consistency statements for you here.
Counsel, have questions with staff? This is a public hearing, anyone who cares to speak for or against. This is a public hearing, anyone who cares to speak for or against, please come forward.
Good evening, I'm Brenda James, stand back, and I'm the owner of 111 Morningside directly across the street from this property and 205 Morningside, two doors down from this property. Could you tell me again how many buildings you are proposing to put on this site?
Yeah, we have the, I believe we have the applicant here as well.
Good afternoon, I'm Carol Stankar, I'm one of the partners with Sangster Investments LLC. To answer your question, it'll be between two to four units total.
If that's the case, I have no opposition. If it's going to be more, I have opposition.
Anyone else here to speak for or against?
Move to close the public hearing, second.
Motion by Councilmember Hall, to close the public hearing, second, by Councilmember Townsend, further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Council, what's your wishes on zoning map amendment 2404?
Move approval of 24-04 with consistency statement.
I have a motion by Councilmember Townsend to approve 2404 with the consistency statement, second. Second by Councilmember Dry, further discussion?
Page, page three of the application would, would lead, and I think this may be where Ms. Stanback might have been coming from, I don't know if it was or not, that the proposed use is multifamily, approximately five to seven efficiency apartments. That might have been where she was coming from. Now, just, it was in the, it was in the application, and that's just, yeah.
I believe that was pursued at first because they want to reuse this building here. I believe that was pursued at first, and there's some issues, there's, it's going to be difficult to do that with the building code and fire code there right now.
Very good, but that may have just been where the verbiage was.
Yeah. Zoning wise, more would be allowed than that, but if that's what the applicant's doing, then.
Further questions, comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Move on to 5D. Text amendment 2403 for various development standards. Kevin Robinson will introduce.
Okay, I'm going to try to pull these up side by side so that we can go through them. We had to do these, I guess this was at the state level or whatever, omnibus bill or something like that, but this is, this is kind of a collection of various different ordinances that we've been, some of them have been on the back burner for a while, some of them are coming up and are really becoming necessary, but we're trying to take care of a handful of them all at once right here, so I'm going to go through them with you. And I'll preface this before, before starting, that Planning Board heard this at their last meeting, they did recommend for approval, they had a couple of very minor changes to it, which I will try to detail in here when we get to them. The first of these sections is 91.10 minimum design standards, that is in the subdivision ordinance, and I'm going to scroll down to this right here in the ordinance itself. We've added a new section in there, section five, and that's related to added detail on regular lot sizes. Also specify when and how flag lots are permitted, specify the requirements for large internal remainder lots within the subdivision. We've also included a new diagram, and this would allow for, there's another item on here that's not directly related to these, but we did change as well, that's to allow buffer zones, minimum of 50 feet wide as open, to be included as open space. So I'll do that. The first on here, shape, greatest extent possible, try to have regular shapes, square, rectangular, right angles as much as possible in our developments. We know that's not always possible, but trying to create some, somewhat regular development that we get when it comes in. Flag lots, flag lots, it's something that every city deals with, we definitely think there is a need for them at times, but we've got some, some really funny, some funny development that's been coming in lately, where we're cramming a whole lot of flag lots off of one street rather than actually building a new road, and we think it's going to cause some problems later on, so that's why we included the item about that in here. And basically, that limits, that would limit flag lots to two per every, two, two flag lots for up to 10 lots, so if you're doing a minor subdivision, you could have two of those, could be flag lots, and then after that, it's 20% of the total. If you're doing new streets, they need to actually be, they, we're not going to be doing, not recommending for flag lots on those. Limiting the length of those to 200 feet, so that you don't have some of these that go back, you know, 3, 4, 500 feet back, makes it more difficult for public service, EMS, fire, police, et cetera, to reach those. And then also, we have a, an item in here about those lots that are larger than two acres in size, that, that those, that flag lot be widened out to 60 feet in width, so that there's street, enough width in there to actually put a street in later on and to further subdivide those areas. Here's the diagram of that right here. We've had a few come in where it's, you've got a little 20 foot lot that goes all the way back here, and you've got really large, you know, three, four, or five acres, well that really kind of makes things harder to build out later on in that area. So just kind of an example. The other item that I mentioned in here, not directly related, but it does go into this section, would be the exception of buffer zones of at least 50 feet in width to be included as part of required, required open space for, for developments. The, scroll down here. The next item, this is a new one, and this is based on some of the recent development we've had in the City Lake area, we've heard a number of concerns come up about development in that area, and so we're proposing a special environs overlay district for City Lake. And it, it's a new section, 92.111. This would be a new zoning overlay district encompassing all cities within 1,000 feet of City Lake, and I will show what it would look like right here. Can you see that? I can't see it real well. Everything in blue would be included at this time, everything that's in tan or pink or whatever that is on there, that's, that's currently in the county, it's within 1,000 feet, but it's not in our jurisdiction, it would not be included, but if that, if those were to annex into the city at any time, then this would be applied to those. This would restrict residential development to two units maximum per acre and 25% developed area for residential, or a maximum of 50% developed area for non-residential. And we've also specified in here where that applies, that is for new developments, any development that you have right now, that is grandfathered in, whether that building gets torn down, your parking lot gets ripped up and you put it back into place, that is, that is set, so only your calculations are taken from the undeveloped area. And that was one of the questions that came up during Planning Board as well, we have included some diagrams in here, which I'll, I'll get to. So the exemptions for that would be that they can exempt back to using regular standards in their development, regular development standards, regular density, site development percentages, if they install best stormwater BMPs, that stands for best management practice, to a 25 year storm standard. So this is going to develop a little bit less of the property, allow more room for filtration of runoff, or they're going to install some higher level infrastructure so that, so that they can actually have a more dense development, more intense use of the property there. It would also install, require a minimum of 100 foot buffer along the City Lake shoreline, with some exceptions for that. There are some exemptions in there that would allow for clearings, like 50 foot clearings to be made with development, but it does restrict the total amount of cleared area that you can have along the shoreline there to 25%. Requires 50 feet, 50 foot buffers along the exterior of all newly developed properties over five acres. So major cluster subdivisions that, major subdivisions just in general that come in would need to have that 50 foot buffer around the perimeter of their property. Also, a 25 foot non-encroachment area from the edge of any federally or state designated sensitive area, including streams, wetlands, and other habitats, with no development in that delineated floodplain except for any infrastructure that is needed. It also encourages tree preservation with mass grading discouraged, and the street network standards as well to improve connectivity and discourage bulk, the bulk of traffic being routed onto existing streets within the overlay district. And then we've got down here, this is the, this is where this would apply, it's a diagram kind of showing you how this applies with undeveloped and already developed areas, a subdivision, new subdivision in there without stormwater, and then a, a new subdivision with stormwater. And we've got the same thing here for your, your non-residential development as well. The next section on buffer yard requirements, this is something that has come up multiple times, and staff is, we've, I mean, I think it's a good idea, want to add this in, we just hadn't gotten a chance to until now. This, this requires a 25 foot minimum wooded or type two exterior vegetative buffer for all single-family attached and detached residential subdivisions over five acres or 20 units. So any duplexes, townhomes, or a single-family residential, currently there was, there's nothing on those. Now, regardless of whether they're going against adjacent to other residential vacant properties or commercial, industrial, they will be required to install those buffers there. That, the item that I mentioned before that went in the subdivision section, we've credited that, if they increase that to 50 feet, then they could, they could credit that towards their required open space as well, provide a little bit of incentive, and what we've done is just write this in right here, we've, we've changed these up so that your single-family residential across the board, you're required a 25 foot wooded buffer or type two replacement buffer yard required when there are more than 20 units or five acres. Single-family residential developments of less than 20 or five acres shall not require buffering. Okay, that one's pretty simple. The next section is at 92.122, landscaping and paving of parking lots and streets. Previously, when we did this, we did not require sidewalks on both sides of the street in residential, and that's what we're proposing is to go, they are required during cluster subdivisions, but if you do a standard subdivision, they are not. We are, hang on a second. Got these backwards, I'm just going to do it like this. If I can get to it. Just change the one section in here. So that those will be required now on all new residential subdivisions. I'll go back up to landscaping and paving of parking lots. There's a lot in here that really doesn't change drastically, but we've included in here that all residential development on new public streets, so not, not new homes on existing streets, but residential development on new public streets will require a, will require street trees. I apologize, it's going so slow. So now, street tree requirements of this section shall apply to all new development, public and private designated as multifamily, recreational, office, institutional, commercial, or industrial land uses, as well as residential development on newly created streets. So the required planting strip must be, but the, the trees must be comprised of a row of canopy or ornamental trees placed in average of 50, 50 feet on center on both sides of new streets and located within the planting strip between sidewalk and street or street curb. When not permitted, we do include, we allow for those to be moved around a little bit depending on what's going on with the development, but they're required to be installed there at 50 feet on center. For commercial, that's, that's 35, for all of the non-residential, that's 35. And then we also specified in here, we had a lot of, there was a lot of, it wasn't real, wasn't, wasn't real specific on the ordinance previously on what types of trees to use as street trees, so we got a lot of really small trees that are being planted, and those are really what you want to have in place when you've got utilities in place. So we've said that when no utilities or other obstructions are present, that medium and large trees shall be planted. If there are utilities overhead or other instructions, obstructions preventing the medium or large trees, then small trees can be planted. One of the requests from Planning Board members from the committee that met to work with us on this was updating our list of, of trees and plant types. This came pretty, pretty specifically from Carey, but it's overall, it's a pretty good list, it's on several state organizations, so it just updates the, the different types of trees. Small, medium, and large, as well as shrubs, but it also includes a section on invasive species as well, and those that we should try to avoid, avoid. Not everything on this list, we do allow for, with approval from staff and or Planning Board, additional species would be allowed if they're not invasive.
Kevin, out of curiosity, do you guess, could just staff tell the difference in some of those trees?
A lot of them, yeah, but not, not, not all of them, no.
That was my question, do we have a subject matter expert on staff?
I'm not a certified arborist, but, but typically on most larger developments, I mean, they will bring in somebody that, that is certified at some point to show us what they're planting there. And sometimes we even get pictures of them, so we kind of know what we're, we're looking for when they install them. We also, this is another, it's the last section in here, it's another item that's been coming up quite frequently. We've got some, some verbiage in the ordinance right now that really, I, I believe kind of it lends towards, you know, that we need to have homes on developed streets. Unfortunately, it's not real clear on that, and it's also kind of hard to apply that across the board, so we've tried to clarify that here, and then also provide for some flexibility in, in how it would be applied in certain cases. So this is a new section, 92.125, structures on underdeveloped lots is what we're calling it, for lack of a better word, we've defined that here as underdeveloped. And it requires improvements to be made with construction on existing lots that are either on unopened or gravel drives, so there's no paved street there. Requires street frontage to be paved to the standard of adjacent street or 20 foot width, whichever's bigger. Allows exceptions for corner lots, in which case, if there's no lots to the rear that need access to a, to a street, then they could pave half, they would have to pave half if there was lots to the rear, kind of split that up, otherwise, they would not have to pave that. Requires new subdivisions or increases in densities on lots from what is currently subdivided and zoned to include improvements to entire adjacent right-of-way. Requires homes at the end of stub streets or unopened right-of-way to be placed outside of an area allowing for future right-of-way extension, we've defined that as being 20 feet on either side of that right-of-way or a minimum of 100 feet from the, from where that, that street, that right-of, right-of-way dead ends. So we got a lot of stuff in here, I'm going to read through these just so it's clear. So no new structures may be built on existing lots without a minimum of 20 linear feet of paved right-of-way, meeting the minimum standards of the subdivision ordinance as provided herein, whichever's greater. Where possible, acquiring additional lots adjacent to and across unopened or underdeveloped right-of-way is in right-of-way is encouraged to reduce costs to the property owner or builder. Prior to construction, the entire frontage of each unpaved lot should be paved to the standards of the closest paved street section or 20 feet minimum, whichever is greater. Urban gutter, ditch shall be provided to the closest finished section of right-of-way. Sidewalks or sidewalk feet and leach will be provided in accordance with the chapter of the section. All improvements shall connect to the closest paved improved street. Where necessary, existing right-of-way may be required to be increased in width to meet these standards. And then basically on here, unless there's a major subdivision part of it, this would authorize us to work with them to record those right-of-way changes, since there's no additional length, they're just widening them out. Development on corner lots with unpaved or unopened right-of-way along the sides of a property shall complete improvements on a minimum of one-half the length of said right-of-way as provided in this section when existing lots to the rear have no access to a paved street. When paving alongside is not required, homes on larger corner lots should be placed in such a way as to allow for future subdivision along the unopened right-of-way as new development becomes feasible. Any subdivision or development of a lot adjacent to any unpaved or unopened right-of-way that would include an increase above one residential unit per existing lot shall require that all portions of the unopened right-of-way adjacent to the lots be completed to the minimum standards of the subdivision ordinance and connect fully to a developed street. We do have a provision in there as well that street connections be made when they're, when they, when those connections will be less than 10% of the total length of the improvements, otherwise those streets could be stubbed out. Depending on the density and anticipated impact or proposed development, planning staff may refer the new development to planning boards, city fire marshal, and other responsible parties. An increase in street or infrastructure standards within the adjacent right-of-way and any additional right-of-way may be required as needed to adequately accommodate, accommodate the new development. And then in addition to setback requirements of this chapter, new homes and other structures and improvements on the site, of the site on the lots at the end of stub streets or unopened right-of-way should be located a minimum of 20 feet outside of the straight-line extension of said right-of-way or a minimum of 100 feet from the end of the unopened right-of-way or stub. I know that's a lot.
Pardon me.
We've got a diagram in here, it's probably, it's a little bit fuzzy here to show you, but let me also show you, I think this is helpful. This is definitely not something that's all over the city, I don't know what percentage of that is, you know, probably less than 10% or less than 6% or 7% total. But we've got a lot of paper streets in the city from subdivisions that were done back in the 30s and the 40s when we didn't bond things out, we didn't make sure infrastructure went in. And, you know, we've, we've done a lot of infill, so we're getting to the point now where a lot of people want to build on these, but they're just not developed lots. And what we don't want to do is have homes put there that are either difficult to be serviced by public safety, are difficult for people to find, where the homeowners eventually are going to come up to the city demanding that things be paved or wanting to go through assessment. We're wanting to make sure they're brought up to the same standards everybody else before those homes go in. And so this is, this map shows those that are either unpaved or gravel streets. And then this right here is, we've included in the ordinance as an example of when those items would need to be done. You can see right here, you've got a, you know, gravel, gravel street or an unopened right-of-way completely that, you know, each one of these would need to pave their share. We would encourage where there are other available lots, like we always do, that somebody try to buy those lots so that it's more economical for them to, to develop those streets. This would be an example of this home only having to pave half of this side street right here because there is, there are additional lots behind it that could, that need access but could shoulder some of that burden when they're built. Additional right-of-way acquisition, a subdivision down here that would need to, this one lot being subdivided to seven lots, okay, all that infrastructure has to go in at that time. And then this right here is to, really the purpose of this, I know it's kind of confusing to visualize, but the purpose of this was, would be to allow for, a road was intended to go in place here at one point, and this would allow regardless of, as long as the house is located outside of this area, it would allow for future development later on down the road to connect those.
Let me clarify, if you're on a dirt road, it's an eighth of a mile long. You own one lot, you do not have to pave anything. If you own two lots, you have to pave part in front of your property.
No, you need to pave, you have to pave to the nearest portion of the street, of paved street.
And we could, would or would not allow that as an assessment?
Well, the, the next thing that I would like to bring up with this would be part of our assessment process. We've looked previously at some ways we can improve that, but that's gonna take some more work with admin and with public utilities and public works before we can do that, so.
Is that not something you'd want to include in there?
Well, it's, it's more of a, it's not really, I don't know that it's as much an ordinance issue as it a, it's a city policy issue, procedural issue. But we have identified that, we do think that that would be relevant to do, but we've got to clean up the process by which that is done right now, it's very sticky.
And council has to sigh because we do not recover all our money on assessments.
No.
Council would be putting quite a bit into paving that street.
Correct, yeah. That is all I have on these.
Count, have any questions of staff?
Thank you for, and the planning board for what y'all've done. I'm sure everybody got all of this, and it's, we can have a test in about seven minutes. Your honor, there's a lot to be considered here. And if I may, I'd like to make the most.
No, hold it, hold it.
Gotta close the public hearing.
If there's a public hearing, anyone who cares to speak for or against, please come As I stated earlier, you'll have three minutes, state your name and address, please.
Travis Alley, 28081 Austin Road, Albemarle. Not really for or against, just kind of a clarity.
Mr. Alley.
State where we can hear you.
Oh, I was trying, so Apex Drive is a gravel street. Yep, so we just recently purchased four and a half acres there, with the understanding we met with your department was we could put three homes, one on Apex, two on 73. So I am yeah, there was one on Apex Drive where there's currently 12 lots that were planted there at one time. So my question is, it's hard to apply this very specifically to every application. So I mean, the closest pavement to where this one house is going to be on that city road is 500 feet. So is it the homeowner's responsibility for one home to pave a city street 500 feet long? That's, I'm just asking for clarity of how this is applied, because that's, that's tough.
Mr. Robinson, what is your policy, what would your policy require?
Yeah, that, that, that lot right there is, I think.
If we don't talk about it, I was told that we did not have to pave the street.
And that might have been somebody on my staff, their interpretation for right now with the way it is, but it's, we're, we're trying to, we're trying to address that right now, so.
We don't have to get into.
And, and, and the problem that we have with that is, and I, I know you can think about it and say, okay, this is one lot, we don't need to do this for one lot. Every lot you do that on, it's pushing that off on somebody further on down the road on some of these streets, because some of these streets are very long and have lots on them already that, some of them aren't even cleared out, there's, there's trees. In this case, there's a 12-foot gravel road that goes up off 73 there. So, you know, it, it's a problem, I mean, you're just, you're pushing the can down the road for somebody else to take care of, whether that is a, another developer that has another 50 to 100 feet they've got to pave, or whether it's the city that has to do it or has to deal with an assessment on it. But it is, it is a, it is a, yeah, it's.
That's something we need to bring up, we, we need to.
Oh, yeah.
Well, it's an affordability issue, I mean, and I, I totally get it, Kevin, if somebody buys and tries to stuff seven houses and doing the weird flag lots that you're addressing, totally respect that.
Mm-hmm.
But when you're buying an existing parcel and not subdividing it any further on the existing city street, I don't see where the burden should be on that one homeowner to get there. It's just, just a question of how this is applied. My other question was regarding the environmental overlay of City Lake. So we own a couple of properties in that overlay, both commercial and residential. So how does that apply with, this is implemented like after tonight, so everything we talked about in there becomes effective tomorrow, so any discussions we've had to this point when it hasn't been developed is out the window?
Yeah, it would be applicable to those properties if they were highlighted and could be fixed up.
Like immediately, like right now?
If it was adopted yet.
Okay.
Yeah. So if you have larger properties, it's probably not a big matter. You've got smaller properties and.
Yep. So the question is, is how would somebody who has purchased land in the city for future plans, how would we know how this is going to affect us, like, I just heard this now?
So I mean, like, I wouldn't have purchased any of that property if I'd have known that immediately, I wasn't going to be able to do anything with it. And I'm not saying you wouldn't be able to do anything with it.
And I think council is hearing this for the first time tonight also.
We are.
So I think they will end up making some kind of decision. I think I heard Mr. Dry trying to make the decision to delay the vote, but we got to go through the public hearing.
Yeah, like, not for or against, I think great things, we see a lot of the infill stuff being here that to me needs to be addressed, and I think Kevin Steen did a great job doing that, thank you.
Thank you.
There's a lot of questions, there's a lot of questions to be answered here.
Good evening, my name is Carla Wirek, I'm at 35737 City Lake Drive. And first, I just, I want to thank the city staff, city council, the planning staff, because they have really taken on a big, big step to bring guidance and order and structure to future planning of residential development that's taking place here in our community. And I understand your concerns, I have a residential home, a property in this same overlay as well as commercial property in this overlay. And I've had questions and with the planning board when they spoke about this last month because of the industrial properties that are there, some of them have been there for 60 years or more, providing jobs and infrastructure. So, you know, jobs and employment opportunities, so, you know, how's this going to impact them? And Kevin did a great job explaining it. But I personally think maybe the property owners may want to know a little bit about this. So they have some, some communication or more explanation of what's happening with the business district itself, because the big, I appreciate the residential, the overlay with regards to protecting the grounds of that area, because we have so much going on there environmentally. And the habitat, the residents that live in that area, lived there for 55 years, as well as just, just the overflow of water that we're experiencing from stormwater. So what you have in front of you is a retention pond that is specific to the community college. I don't know, is that a 10-year retention pond or a 25-year retention pond, do we know? We don't know. So December 17th, the residents that live there and along Park West, everyone, we started having a lot of rain. I was there celebrating Christmas with my family. And it was so significant, the neighbors, one specific neighbor, Mr. Farmer, walked all the way out to figure out where's this rain coming from, because you'll see this stream is in front of, is to the left of his property. So he followed the stream and it went to the retention pond at the community college. So as we put retention ponds around this area, even with future development, I think anything more than two houses per acre is too much, even with a retention pond. Along Poplin's Grove and anything else there, because we have so much rock. And there's a reason why all that land was forestry for so many years. But this here just gives you an idea of December 17th, and then on the back, on January 9th, you see where, again, my parents' home is completely flooded. I'm sorry, the roads. And then the same thing at Mr. Kevin's, where we've been talking about City Lake Drive and more residential development that's coming. I know that they've talked to, I know that Kevin has reached out to North Carolina D to try to figure out why this retention pond is having so much of an impact on the residents, but this is, this is why I've been asking for these overlays. I appreciate the planning staff efforts. They've sat here, you guys have sat here for three years trying to understand how do we manage this type of stormwater and development? And I appreciate the buffers that they're putting pla, putting in place around residential development around the whole community, because in the, so anyway, I appreciate it tremendously and what you guys are doing, it's a big step, it's a lot of work, it's not easy, and I think we're headed in a better direction than where we've been.
Thank you. Anyone else who cares to speak for or against?
Good evening, I just wanted to commend Kevin and his staff for what they've done with the overlay at City Lake Park, as well as the native trees and plants. I know some of you guys are like, you might not understand it, but any state project moving forward now will require those native trees and plants. So it's a really big step for keeping our beautiful environment the way it is, and then also keeping City Lake nice and enjoyable. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else care to speak for or against?
Move to closed public hearing.
Motion by Councilor Aubrey, opposed to public hearing. Second by Councilmember Hunt, further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? I open the floor to discussion or for motion.
Before, before a motion, I just have one question of Kevin. Kevin, you made some reference in here that the trees particularly came from Cary. Basically, the list came from Cary. This is not a specific question, this is just a general question. There is a lot of verbiage change in here, okay? Were there other cities, towns, villages that we pulled any of this from? Was there a list, a listserv?
You referring specifically to the trees?
No, not to the trees, this is just in general. You mentioned that the tree list came from Cary.
Some of the stuff, yes, some of it, no, some of it we had to create on our own. We've got, in terms of the flag lots, we did get on the listserv, we had a handful, I think we had three or four responses to that, it's something that, same opinion as what we are, is that, yeah, they're, they are useful and sometimes they're necessary, but they're not something you really want to have an abundance of. And so the 200-foot maximum flag length, flagpole length, that was something that came from one of the towns, so there were some items that were in there like that. The City Lake Special Environments Overlay District, it's not entirely, we're already doing that to a certain extent, between our, our watershed and then our Northeast Connector overlay that we've got. So a lot of that was really just kind of taking that and tweaking it for this, for this area. The buffer yard requirements, yeah, that's, that's pretty common, especially on larger developments, and a lot of cities are doing that right now. Landscape paving of parking lots, adding in the, the street trees and residential, also something that a lot of, a lot of towns are doing. The tree requirements, the, the tree types, that came from Cary, but again, that's also, there's several state organizations and also in the southeast, but particularly North Carolina, because those are native to here.
Right.
That have, that have either adopted these or have come up with their own lists that are very similar to what you have here. Sidewalks and pedestrian amenities, that's something honestly that most, most towns have, it was, we, we had a kind of an exemption on that, but we have so many cluster subdivisions and we have, you're required to put sidewalks in if you're developing a new lot right now, we kind of figured that it should probably be on both sides of the street, just in general. So the underdeveloped lots are right-of-way, same thing on there, it's kind of mixed, a lot of people are trying to figure out what to do with it, it's, there's, there's not really a great answer for it, but you know, the problem is, the more you just kind of go ahead with it, the, the harder the problem is later on to solve. And so a lot of that was just us kind of trying to come up with some creative ways to, to address it.
And the reason I ask is that for the general population particularly, this doesn't just, it wasn't just out there, or haphazard, other, other places have are having the same issues and they, these are the steps that they are taking.
Yeah, I, I wish on a couple of these I'd gotten some better responses from them.
Right.
More commiseration that, yeah, they've got issues dealing with this stuff too, but not a lot of great answers, so. But on most of this stuff, I would say, yeah, it's pretty commonplace, so.
Further discussion? Do we have any motions?
Yes, sir. Again, thank you.
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, again, thank you very much. I think y'all can see, there's a lot here in that we, as a council and the planning department and all departments within the city, are really trying to look out for what's going to be happening down the road. The last eleven years, we've seen a lot of development. A lot of questions have come forward over the years that Kevin and his folks are addressing. It's going to take a little time to digest it, just like with Travis's question. How's that going to impact me? We need to buckle it down so, and have the communication so that no one is surprised. So therefore, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make the motion that we, I guess, table this till we have further time to, uh, review, ask questions, and at such time, bring it back forth to the community.
I have a motion by Councilmember Dry to table this.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Aldridge, further discussion.
My only question was, was this at the, if I remember correctly, at a, um, call meeting just about two weeks ago? Is that when this came? The eighteenth of April?
Yes.
Okay. Again, just for complete transparency.
All those in favor say aye.
I would say I would agree with putting it off a little while, because I've read through some of it. I've not read the whole thing. So I would like the time to read through it. However, I don't want to wait months. I hope we would be looking at the next meeting or two or pretty soon to, to make a decision on it.
Well, Your Honor, I just want to echo those comments and, and thank Kevin and his staff for, for your hard work on this also, but to thank the, uh, residents for coming out. Um, you know, we're seven people up here, and, uh, as you see, there's, this thing is, this is a big deal. There's a lot of information, a lot of terminology on here, and we want to make sure that we get this thing right. So thank you for, to, to Ms. Wirick and Travis for coming out and, uh, sharing your viewpoints on that. It's very important. You know, it's, uh, best thing in the world that we can have is, is input from the citizens and residents, uh, when we come up to a situation in a conversation like this. So thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Thanks, Kevin.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Tell the planning board thank you for their hard work.
Moving on to the next allegation, seven A. Paul Wilkins, Gateway of Hope, do a presentation. Council, you have a handout that was given to you just a little earlier.
Uh, Mayor Michael.
Paul, you'll have ten minutes.
Thank you. Mayor Michael and, uh, city council members, thank you very much for this opportunity. My name is Paul Wilkins, uh, live at four six four eight one Campground Road, New London. I'm Executive Director of Gateway of Hope Addiction Recovery Center. We've been in the county since two thousand eighteen with locations, couple of houses in Locust. And we currently have fifteen residents, twelve men, three women. Um, at this time, I'd like to give a few minutes to one of our residents, um, Tabitha Stevens. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Tabitha.
Can you put the microphone down?
That's okay.
My name's Tabitha Stevens. I have been a resident of Gateway of Hope for a little over a year. And, uh, prior to coming to Gateway, I was homeless, bound to addiction, and, um, just didn't have a future at all. Throughout my year at Gateway, I have, um, restored relationships with my family, my children, not only, um, maintain stable employment and, um, back in school, doing things, and obviously getting to work with the community and the homeless and, um, ministering to them and trying to help those that are in need as well. So through Gateway, I've got to restore a lot of my life and, uh, continue to do so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think she deserves an applause.
Thank you for the applause. She definitely deserves it. I thought that her testimony, um, was especially poignant because she was homeless in Elbemarle. She knows the streets. She knows the people. And in December, um, it became, it started to get on our radar to help the homeless. And, um, because so many, I would estimate eighty percent of our residents experienced homelessness in their past. And knowing and just hearing the stories, I knew that, um, and in recovery, it's important to give back. And so we started to kind of knock on that door. Um, myself having never been homeless, it was a little bit daunting. And it was a bit surprising, even those who had been homeless, it was a little bit daunting, um, to walk up to a camp and ask how somebody's doing. Um, the reason I'm here is that Stanley County approached us, I think in February, and asked if we would, um, kind of share what we've been doing and what, if we could put together something where we could really kind of organize the troops, if people would, to kind of put out some expectations, to put out, be a little bit more deliberate. And it kind of grew into something that, had I known what it was today, I would have said no, uh, in the, in the outset. But I'm not sure if that was by their plan or just the, the water kept getting warmer. But, um, here I am, and we have launched something called Stanley Cares. And you have that green brochure in front of you. If you'll notice that there's not a single individual's name on it, there's not an organization's name on it. There's just a, there's just a simple phone number to call two or three times on that pamphlet. The information inside the pamphlet doesn't even have any information in Stanley County. It's all outside of Stanley County. One day, um, my wife and I were talking about the aggravations of her health issues and ongoing for many years. And we were talking about what a pain it was to have to drive an hour and a half to a specialist. And I realized, why don't our homeless have an opportunity to see a specialist that's outside of our county? And I wondered if they would be better served, quite honestly, because my wife is and my family is with specialists outside of Stanley County. And so really, it was with that, um, with that thought that we put together this pamphlet. The information in the pamphlet has not been of much benefit. Um, in the two months that we've done it, um, the only benefit on that is the phone number. Nobody is looking at this and saying, yeah, I'd like to go here, or yes, I'd like to go there. They simply call the number because what we've realized in about three weeks, I would say in about three weeks, we realized the importance is we're not going to get through this barrier and this wall without relationship. So we started to sit down, literally in the dirt, sit down with the individuals, sometimes serving them food at the community table, sometimes serving them breakfast. Tomorrow morning, every Tuesday, we do that, um, at Grace Place. We're not reinventing the wheel of servitude. We're simply becoming friends. We're simply becoming a familiar face. And the Stanley Cares, we just hope that as I wear a green t-shirt that says Stanley Cares, that when they see that the next time, they know what that person is all about. They don't have to reintroduce, reintroduce themselves. I'm not here to promote anybody or anything, except Hope. I'm a Hope dealer. And, um, it is, it brings me great joy to see the residents that I work with every day run with this. I've seen them cry when they leave a ball field. The despair and the hurt and the pain and the gratitude is not them anymore. I've seen them, Tabitha, I hate if I told you this, she took two full days off of work last week. She got two women into detox. She took a day, she didn't work on Saturday. She took three days off of work to do that. It's a lot of work. It's not a phone call and a forty-minute ride. It's a lot of talk. It's a lot of rejection. Oh, you have this medication. Oh, you have this medical issue. We got to find a different facility for you now. One individual couldn't get into detox for an entire day. Tabitha called me, can we house her overnight? It goes against everything that we are to house an active user in a house of recovery. Tabitha's a year clean. We're going to put somebody who was strung out in that house? Yeah, we did, on Thursday night, so that she could get into the medical attention that she needed on Friday. And she's still in detox today. She had blisters. This young lady is in her twenties, had blisters on her feet so bad she could barely walk. Barely walk. And her, her sores were bad enough that she was rejected at detox centers. They said, no, we can't, not with those sores. So we had to find a place that would serve her medically, the same time detox her off of serious drugs. I hope one day that lady can come up here and I can share her testimony too with you. She got a long road ahead of her. But that's what we're doing. And it's not about Gateway of Hope. It's not about Paul, and it's not about Tabitha. At the end of the day, it's about those poor men and women that are out there that need help. Ten minutes before I walked here, I walked up here, I got a phone call from a homeless man named Steven, fifty-three years old. He's been an addict since he was thirteen. Homeless for four, all of that in Stanley County. Homeless for four years in Elbemarle. Friday, he went into detox. They released him Saturday. He's got issues. He wouldn't go on to the next step, which would be treatment. But he called me ten minutes ago. He can only be calling me for one thing, because I only offer him one thing, and it's Hope. That's the only thing I give these people. I'm honored to work with them. Sunday morning, I get out of church, there's three people standing in our church's parking lot, homeless people, bags. You know what? They were my friends. They knew me, and I knew them. And I was so proud to be the friend of those three homeless people. What an honor it is. And I guess I'm here today that, for the first time since we've been open in two thousand eighteen, Gateway of Hope has never addressed the city board, the city board. Um, we are directing a lot more of our resources to the city. We, all of our homeless work so far has been in the city of Elbemarle, none of it out. And we don't plan on doing anything outside of Stanley County. But it's all been in the city. And, um, I guess I, I, I'm here today, I don't even know what my ask is. Support? Maybe. Maybe. You know, it feels different to go out and, and work with the homeless when you know you have the county behind you. There's just something different when you know you have their authority and their approval, and you can say, this is what I'm doing. What I'm asking today, I guess, I guess right now, standing here, I've got fifty seconds left. My ask is, can I at least have your approval? Stanley County has said, we'll, we'll support you for four months for four thousand dollars total. It's not much, but it helps cover my costs. And I can offer payment to the individuals that are working with me. I can, I, we decided ten bucks an hour. You go out and work with them, and, and ten bucks an hour. And I have in my truck right now, two checks written for Tabitha and one other individual. And before this meeting in the parking lot, I handed them each a check for two hundred dollars, and they rejected, both of them rejected it, and said, we don't want the money. I knew they needed the money. They lost work. But you know what? Driving around outside, driving around costs some money. They would not take the two hundred dollars each. It's not about the money. It really isn't. It's more about your approval. It's more about your support. It's more about the authority that this board carries and says, we approve. That's what I want. That's what I'm after. Will you be Hope Dealer with me? Will you be a Hope Dealer? What we bring to the table is a little bit different, because when we talk to the individuals, we don't offer them three days of detox or twenty-eight day treatment. We offer them a life of, uh, excuse me, a, a year of support. Twelve months. You go through a few steps, and you have my support. I will be your friend. I will walk with you, and I will, we will approach every dream that you have in your life for the next twelve months. That's what is changing their minds and saying, yes, I'll make that phone call. Thank you very much. I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you for her presentation, and, uh, we appreciate it. And keep doing what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right.
Seven B, Renee Van Horn, Stanley County Arts Council.
Good evening, Mayor Michaels, Mayor Pro Tem Hall, and council members of the city of Elbemarle. My name is Renee Van Horn, and I have the privilege of serving our community as the Executive Director of the Stanley County Arts Council. This year, the Stanley County Arts Council is celebrating its fiftieth anniversary with the theme Fifty Years Cultivating Creativity. We've been able to cultivate creativity through our many partnerships in the community and adding program, programming for areas that we determine a need. Just a quick recap for those of, of those of you who are not familiar with the Arts Council. Each year, we conduct the cultural education program in partnership with the Stanley County Schools. It provides each student from pre-K through tenth grade an opportunity to broaden their knowledge and exposure to the arts by attending a professional performance in various genres of the arts, including theater, poetry, puppetry, dance, kid-friendly opera, and music. But we share with them the genres that they may not be familiar with, including the blues and jazz for music and tap for dance. Each year, we award grassroots grant funding to area organizations. In two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four, between both our ARPA grassroots grants and the grassroots grant programming, we funded over forty-nine thousand to fourteen organizations, including the various arts organizations, but also to GHA, Pfeiffer University, Stanley County Schools, the Stanley County Senior Center, Stanley County Partnership for Children, and Baden History Museum. To increase public art in Stanley County, we also awarded funds to ADDC, Norwood Central Business District, and the Friends of the Agro Civic Center for their proposed mural projects. This program began in nineteen seventy-eight, and since then, eight hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars to over sixty-five organizations have benefited our local economy. This does not include the grant match that is required from each of the recipients. Since two thousand eight, we have offered our local youth an opportunity to explore the arts further with our summer arts camp. Our art camp includes all genres of the arts, visual arts, dance, music, and theater. Due to the demand in two thousand eighteen, we added a second location and week to increase our reach. In two thousand twenty-one, we partnered with Atrium Health to offer scholarship funding to those families that could not afford to send their child to camp. In two thousand twenty-three, we had forty campers receive either partial or full funding to attend. This year, both of our camps filled within, filled to capacity with ten days of open registration. Each year, we also host the Celebration of the Arts. It's a free event that showcases the best of the arts in our county. We highlight student art, performances from our arts organizations and school groups, an opportunity for arts-based businesses and arts organizations to promote themselves, and to honor those who go above and beyond in promoting the arts to our community and our student body by presenting the Arts Person of the Year and the Fine Arts Educator of the Year. In celebration of our fiftieth, we invited all past recipients of these awards to come to our awards ceremony to be recognized again for their continued involvement in the arts. This year, our Arts Person of the Year was Lisa Ubers, who is heavily involved with the corral, the concert band, and the Uwari players. And our Fine Arts Educator of the Year is a visual art teacher at Locust Elementary, Julie Starnes. So in celebration of our fiftieth, we had some special events also occur. In early March, we invited the community to a free concert with the Gospel Choir from Charleston, South Carolina, called The Low Country Voices. A few weeks later, we had the Celebration of the Arts. And on March twenty-third, the Stanley News and Press devoted their March twenty-third edition of the Spirit of Stanley Magazine to the arts in our community. We then held a ribbon cutting at the Stanley County History Center to launch our exhibit that showcases and educates the public of who we are, what we do, and more. Because the Arts in Stanley County is a cooperative effort, this exhibit includes visually stunning exhibits of all the arts organizations and their story. It includes success stories of Stanley County artists of all genres that have pursued their passion and have been successful. And we were able to loan the exhibits from the North Carolina Music Hall of Fame of our very own inductees, Lou Donaldson and Kelly Pickler. To have our youth involved in our celebration, we conducted a bookmark contest in partnership with Stanley County Schools. This bookmark contest encouraged the students to portray their love of the arts. These students were honored at the Celebration of the Arts as well as the museum exhibit ribbon cutting. Banners of each winning designer are also on display at the Stanley County History Center, and the bookmarks themselves are being distributed at the schools throughout the county. And this summer, they'll be available at the branches of the public library. I encourage you all to take a moment and check out the History Center exhibit that tells the story of the arts in Stanley County from various perspectives. This special exhibit will be open through Labor Day, and I'd like to extend a special thank you to David Bath, the city of Elbemarle's Communications Director, for his support by reaching out to news outlets for further coverage. The exhibit was featured on Spectrum News the morning of April twenty-fifth. The finale for our fiftieth anniversary will be hosting the Charlotte Symphony. But instead of a Sunday short program, But instead of a Sunday short program, it will actually be a full-length program on Saturday night, September 14th, at the Stanley County Agro Civic Center. I hope you will join us. And tonight, I would like to tell you about a new opportunity that we are bringing to Stanley County. On June 21st, we will celebrate the Summer Solstice with an international celebration called Make Music Day. It was launched in Paris in 1982. Make Music Day has become a global phenomenon celebrated by millions of people in more than 2,000 cities around the world, including 154 cities in the US, where it has spread widely after debuting in New York in 2007. Held on the longest day of the year, the world's largest annual music event celebrates and promotes the natural music maker in everyone, regardless of age or skill level. Last year, 117 US cities organized 4,791 free make music events on June 21st. In 2024, another 50 US communities will join Make Music Day for the first time, including cities in New Jersey, Wisconsin, Connecticut, Texas, and cities such as Orlando, Tallahassee, Phoenix, Salt Lake City. North Carolina, with the financial assistance of the North Carolina Arts Council, has initiated new chapters in 12 counties, with Stanley County being one of them. This is completely different from a traditional music festival. Make Music Day activities are free and open to anyone wanting to participate. Reimagining cities and towns as stages, every kind of musician, young and old, amateur and professional, of every musical persuasion will fill the streets, parks, plazas, porches, rooftops, gardens, and other public spaces to celebrate, create, and share the music with their friends and family and strangers. We have partnered with ADDC, Albemarle Parks and Rec, Music on Main, Albemarle Music Store, RBC Music Store in Locust, as well as Locust Parks and Rec, to make this a reality for us. The Stanley County Corral and Concert Band is also offering us their assistance as well as local band directors. Make Music Day is a celebration, not a festival of music. It has various components. Any place can be a venue to host musicians, and any musician of any skill level is invited to participate. The goal is for anyone and everyone to make music or enjoy music that day. Make Music Day will have its own website where venues and musicians can register to be a part of the celebration. With this being the first year, we have focused our energies on hosting workshops in downtown Albemarle and Locust Town Center, but we encourage venues and musicians to perform throughout the county. The free workshops include bucket drumming, ukulele, guitar, voice, harmonica, how to make a kazoo, how to create a rock band, plus an instrument petting zoo at both Albemarle Music Store and RBC Music Store. Locations for the workshops in Albemarle include the Albemarle Neighborhood Theater, Courthouse Square, and Music on Main. The Stanley County Public Library and History Center will have rhythm instrument making stations available all day. Joey Allman is currently securing venue locations downtown, and we already have commitments from Albemarle Sweet Shop, Uwari Brewing, Tomahawk Axe Throwing, and Armadillo Axe Throwing. We will also have Courthouse Plaza available for musicians to perform. There are so many possibilities with this event. We will encourage daycares to have their children make music and share with their community, and for churches to do the same. With such a strong history of music within our county, we look forward to being, this to being an annual celebration in Stanley County. We encourage the city of Albemarle to assist us in this endeavor. For more details about the actual event, I ask you to visit the website, which is makemusicday.org/stanleycounty. This website will be constantly changing from now until June 21st with updates of the venues, the musicians, and more. Lastly, I want to thank the city of Albemarle for your continued support of the Stanley County Arts Council. The ability for us to conduct business and light the spark in the arts for so many is dependent upon the individual's support of our donors, individual businesses, and our municipalities. We thank you for being there for us in the beginning, the present, and hopefully the future. It is a win-win decision. The arts have many benefits, but all the research confirms that it is one of the best economic drivers in a community. People attending arts events eat out, they shop, they may stay in one of our hotels, and they spend more than just the price of a ticket. The arts benefit all in so many ways, and we are so grateful for your support. Thank you.
Right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Renee, and thank you for coming to Albemarle from the western part of the county on a regular basis to attend things here. She was at Market Station for our Friday, on Thursday night last week.
And for those of you who don't know, Martha Sue is actually one of our volunteers for the cultural education program. So she has attended all the performances, shuffling kids in and out of the Agro Civic Center, which is about 750 for each performance. And we have a very short time ferrying to get them in and out, but it is all very much worth it. Thank you.
Moving to the consent agenda. Consider approval of 24, 25 Board of Directors roster for the Albemarle Downtown Development Corporation. Consider road closure for the Clark graduation party. I believe that's on May the 18th. Consider road closure for the Baden Brew Summer Festival. I believe that's June the 22nd. Consider petition, we're accepting a petition for annexation of properties on Poplin's Grove Church Road and setting a public hearing for June the 17th.
Uh, just, I'll make a motion in just a moment, but I just wanted to make sure that that came out so that folks that are watching tonight or reading about it in the paper realize that that, that, that is not, that is a public hearing that today on the 17th.
Most approve consent agenda.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend, approve consent agenda. Second by Councilmember Aldridge, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carried. Moving to unfinished business, golf court ordinance. Council, we delayed action on that at the last meeting. I'll open that for discussion and/or motion. One thing I did point out, some of the paperwork that I sent out. Either we need, I think we either need to set hours of dusk to dawn or we need to require lights on these golf carts. Right now, we have no dusk to dawn. They can operate it even in the dark, but we don't have lights on them. We need to address that in our ordinance.
Yeah, I do have a question, if I may. I was, apologize, I was not at the last meeting when this was, uh, when you guys discussed this, but um, I just, maybe the police chief can chime in on this. Based on a phone call I had, someone was telling me that, uh, just say a person buys a golf cart, they go to the DMV and they register, they put a tag on the back. There's really nothing, I mean, we don't have to approve this ordinance for them to do that. Is that correct?
You can, you can go to DMV, get one that is required to have all the equipment, has the inspection, it has a license tag from DOT, and it can be operated on the streets right now. We've got some on the streets right now. I don't know how long you see them, but we have them right now.
Let's call it low speed.
Yeah, it's, you're right. It's a low speed vehicle, not a golf cart, a low speed vehicle.
It's the same thing as a side-by-side, is that correct?
I don't, they look like it. I don't think they're the same thing.
Well, because a side-by-side or a golf cart, I mean, I, I know somebody in town that has one of these golf carts, like Councilmember Townsend has a picture of there. And they have a tag in North Carolina, like a registered, it's registered, they have a, a registration card. It has a regular tag on it. And they can drive wherever they want to. So what I, what I, what I want to make sure before we take this vote is, am I correct in saying, and someone, someone else also said, either you put a tag on it or you put a, one of those, uh, triangle, orange farm equipment placards on the back. And if you use that, you can also drive on city streets. Now, I don't want to.
Now, you have to have it inspected by the police. If, if council passed this ordinance, you will have to have it inspected by the police department and a permit from the police department. And the placard, I guess, comes up if you're going to put lights on it or not put lights on it. You can put lights on it, you probably don't need the placard. But if you're not going to put lights on it, you need the placard and you need to set the dusk to dawn hours.
But what I'm asking is, before this ordinance has ever been brought up, like, but if, if this wasn't even on our agenda tonight, I live in Albemarle, I own a golf cart. I can either go to the DMV and get a tag or I can put a placard on the back and then drive it. Is that correct?
No.
Only if you go get it, meet all the requirements of the DOT, of, of state law, and have it inspected and a license plate on it, then you can operate.
Without, so this, this ordinance will be null and void if I had that, if I had that.
If you had that, yes. Basically, we don't require quite as many things in our ordinance that the state requires on the state law for a low-speed vehicle. So if we, difference would be they come to the police department for an inspection and a permit.
And, and I think that's the issue.
That's the key point. There's a special use permit that's gained through the police department. I got the same call from probably the same individual. And uh, it, it's, I think the way the state statute is, the, the way the state statute is, is that, yes, it, it is a licensed vehicle, uh, or a golf cart, whichever one we call it. But the other thing that comes into play is what you see on the streets mostly today. I don't know what you call it. I've never had the desire to own one or want one or whatever else, but they're jacked up and they're all over the place. But uh, the thing that, that happens here is that the police department, uh, will need to do their due diligence and then issue a special, uh, permit there for it. That makes the difference, does it not, Chief?
Right. The big difference between a golf cart and a low-speed vehicle are the speeds that they operate at. The low-speed vehicle comes from the manufacturer with, uh, all the equipment placed on it and it's got a VIN number. So the Department of Motor Vehicles will then register that vehicle. A golf cart doesn't come with any of those items. It does not have a VIN, and that's where the city can take action through ordinance to allow it.
My understanding is that the LSVs could be approved by the state, but a typical golf cart could not be.
Correct.
That's right.
That's right. Okay, okay.
And that, I think, and I can't find it right this very minute, but there is, there was an, an information sheet that was sent that really describes the specifics on that LSV. There you go. You got it right there.
You need it.
Yes, Pat, thank you. Pass it to me, please. Yeah, well, and I, this came, this came because I think it answers some questions. There's, from what I understand, and what do you have a picture of there, Dexter?
The low-speed vehicle versus a golf cart.
Okay.
Which comes from the manufacturer.
Right, right. And I think we've had, thank you, I think we've had some of those that are, are here in Albemarle. Yes, that are, that have, that have the license tag on them.
They're tagged, registered with the Department.
With the OV.
Correct.
Right, Department of, DMV.
Further questions, comments?
I do agree with the mayor's recommendation that we do, um, so that we don't put additional burden on the police department on trying to monitor golf carts or anything of that nature at nighttime. I think we should make a requirement for them to be equipped with lights.
Lights or dusk to dawn. Well, if they have lights, then that's.
I think it'd be better to just go with lights instead of, um, allowing them.
Headlights, brake lights, turn signals.
Yes, correct.
Well, and I think that's in, that's, that's in the.
But the mayor had added that as a.
Right, but I think that's in the ordinance. And let, I think that's in the ordinance.
It's not in the ordinance.
The lights are, not, maybe not headlights, but it's got turn signals and that type thing in it.
But just to clear up anything, let's make sure.
We can add it in there if it's a duplication, then we're good to go twice.
So I have a really crazy question to ask. What is the difference between a low-speed vehicle and a golf cart about two things? About how fast they will go and the power that they have, okay?
The low-speed vehicle can operate between, let, no more than 25 miles an hour, and they couldn't, the golf cart can't go over 20 miles an hour.
Sure, that picture.
Oh, yeah, I've seen it. And I'm doing that just again for people that are watching and listening and that kind of thing. And, and I don't know the answer to this. What is the difference in price of a low-speed vehicle and a golf cart that would have to have all of the bells and whistles, no pun intended, should we approve this? See, I think.
That's gonna, that's gonna be depending on the.
Well, I'm sure, but the basic, I'm talking about a basic model, a golf cart that then has to have the bells and whistles to me, if, if we were to approve this ordinance, to meet this ordinance. Because I believe that there aren't, if we approve it, there are not going to be very many people out here with them, I don't think. I think there'll be folks within neighborhoods that might do that. Um, I don't think we're going to be inundated with them.
I don't think it'd be to the point of abuse, you know, where we, like you said, inundated with numerous golf carts or low-speed vehicles in our downtown or major streets. But we got a lot of subdivisions and, um, in, in the city now that we didn't have back in 2000, whenever, whatever year.
Seventeen?
That we discussed this, you know, and I think it's been more of a demand from more so some of the, um, smaller neighborhoods as well as subdivisions. And, you know, I think we, we've got a lot of feedback. I don't know how many people was at the public hearing during the last meeting, but
Not.
I know we have received a lot of email communication.
We had one person that was here to speak in favor, none to speak against. And that's, and the reason we left the vote open was because you and Mr. Aldrich were not here and we knew that you all would want input on this. To that end, I have received phone calls, both pro and against it. And there are a lot of pros and negatives. You know, I, what I don't want, and this, and this is within the ordinance, is that they can't be on major thoroughfares. They can't be on roads that are over a certain amount, speed limit and that type thing. I think there's a lot of concerns out there, not necessarily miscommunication, but a lot of concerns about where they can be.
Then, then, in keeping with that.
They can't.
In keeping with that, uh, I made a big argument last time against golf carts using our own ordinance. And, and there's one sentence I've got, I've got to read again for the public, for everybody. This ordinance is adapted to address the interest of public safety. Golf carts are not designed or manufactured to be used on public streets. And that is part of the, of, of the ordinance that we're even considering. In the event, Martha Sue, in keeping with what you're talking about, if a motion is made to approve golf carts, I'm going to move an amendment to it to include First Street, Second Street, and Main Street on those pla, those streets where they're prohibited.
Excluding?
What?
You're gonna make a motion to exclude them?
Excluding on First, Second, and Main Streets, which is exactly what you're saying.
Now, what, what law says is they can have to be used on a street under 35 miles per hour. They can cross a 30, a 45, but they can't be used on a 45.
No, we specifically, we specifically prohibit them from Northeast Connector, uh, the bypass and Highway 55.
Those are 45 mile an hour speed.
Well, I'll make, I'm gonna make the motion if we can be turned down. I don't, I can't see golf carts on those streets.
Further discussion?
I like a motion to approve ordinance 2411 with the change of adding headlights.
Headlights, turn signals, and stop and brakes. I have a motion, if you didn't even get that, uh, to approve adding headlights, turn signals, and brake lights, taillights. Motion by Councilmember Whitely, second by Councilmember Townsend. And does that include if you add lights, removing the placard or at, keeping the placard?
You have to keep all of that based.
I keep it all.
That's based upon.
All right. Have a motion, second. Further discussion?
I, Mayor, I'd like to move an amendment to the motion to include First Street, Second Street, and Main Street where golf carts would be prohibited along with those already mentioned, uh, the bypass, Highway 52, and Northeast Connector.
Council, you've heard the motion. Do I have a second?
For the motion or the?
Motion as amended, his amendment, his amendment, his amendment.
Have a second on the amendment?
I, I will second that for, for, just for discussion.
Further discussion, I have a second.
And that is referencing, uh, Mr. Bramlett, 78.06 Operation Restrictions Rules and Regulations Outside Number Two.
Number Two.
Where it is limited to. So that would be where you are putting that in. I have, so we're discussing right now on the amendment. Just on the.
Further discussion?
On the amendment, right?
All those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion fails four three. Now we're back to the original motion. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion carries six one. Moving on to new business. Eleven A, consider appointment of new members to the planning and zoning board. Councilor, you have a list of members in your packet that has been recommended that have, have given applications. Uh, one is to reappoint Marcus Owens to a second full term in seat two. Consider reappointing Jennifer Miller, Miller to her first full term in seat three. Consider appointing Steven Tanner Denton to the remainder of the term for July one of twenty-five, twenty-fifth. For first alternate effect immediately, and then he can be reappointed for the first full term on July one of, uh, twenty twenty-five. Consider appointing Rob McIntyre to the first full term for the second alternate seat affected seven one twenty-four. Those are the, the, uh, applications we have at this time.
I would move approval of Marcus Owens, Jennifer Miller, Tanner Denton, and Rob McIntyre with leaving the third alternate open at this point.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Townsend. Further discussion?
I just would again say two things that I want to see when we do this. And one of them is, and we, I've got, I see the interest forms for the two people there. But I really like to see, um, attendance forms. I think that is a major, major, um, because I know that we've had some times when you've not even been able to have a meeting for the lack of folks being available. So in any, in any time of any appointment to boards, I want to see what the attendance records are. And that's not directed to you, that's just a statement, because I think that's so needed.
Yeah, and we haven't had as many problems since we combined the boards and we have alternates, but we're, we're already kind of low and then we had, had a death and then we had.
Right.
A, a couple of people that were kind of coming off, um. I, I'm not sure if I put on there or not, but we, uh, we will have a couple of people that will probably be coming off in July, um, and we do have at least one more person interested, um, so there, but even at that, there will probably be one or two alternates available still at that time.
Because this, this is just gonna get us through in thirtieth, actually.
Yeah, basically.
Right, thank you.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Consider reappointment to the alcohol beverage control board. Consider Terry Morgan for reappointment.
Will approve.
Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Aldrich. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Eleven C, establish filing fees that currently is $20 for mayor, $10 for council members.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hall to continue, second by Councilmember Aldrich. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Eleven D, presentation of fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five city Albemarle budget, Mr. Rhodes.
We're gonna go over this before questions, Your Honor?
Now, Mr. Rhodes will have a presentation.
I'm submitting the proposed budget for your review for the fiscal year twenty, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. I'm happy to report that the city will fulfill all its financial responsibilities for the current budget cycle. Our projections indicate that the city anticipates closing the year in a strong financial position with sufficient fund balances across all funds. Developing a balanced budget that effectively addresses the diverse needs of our community poses a significant challenge. Particularly in light of the rising operational expenses and the growing expectations placed upon the city of Albemarle. This is exacerbated by the fact that we are in the final year before countywide revaluation of property values and sales tax revenues have decreased. Before highlighting the proposed budget, I would like to summarize the accomplishments for the current year. First, in the general fund, we purchased several vehicles for sworn use in the police department. We made an addition of a sworn school resource officer or SRO so that all schools within the city limits are now staffed with an SRO officer. And we've also completed refurbishment of ladder truck eleven. Continuing on highlights in the general fund, uh, a partnership between Atrium Health and the Stanley Health Foundation and Parks and Recreation led to a new playground at the E Waddell Center. New LED lights were installed at the pickleball courts at Rock Creek Park. We reestablished an assistant director of Parks and Recreation position. The city enhanced its security framework by utilizing external testing services to identify possible vulnerabilities and implementing recommendations for strengthening security. We continued to manage critical, critical projects to enhance economic development, including the Albemarle Business Center and Courthouse Plaza. The services supported through the enterprise funds also had ex, uh, substantial achievements. Some areas to highlight include entering into the Elektra City's Registered Apprenticeship Program. Masked arms are being installed at South Second Street and South Street intersection. New security camera and front gates have been installed at the Jack F nil water treatment plant. New water meters were purchased to increase accuracy and efficiency of readings. And we've established a new solid waste collection division to provide leaf and yard waste collection services by city employees. The proposed budget was developed to align with goals and objectives outlined in the city of Albemarle's strategic plan. This plan was formulated based on input from residents, city staff, and city council, and serves as a guiding framework or roadmap. Following its adoption in two thousand twenty-two, we conducted another community survey this past year to gauge progress. The two thousand twenty-three survey results indicate notable improvements in residents' perceptions of Albemarle as a desirable place to live and to raise a family. Furthermore, feedback highlighted enhancements in feelings of safety, diversity of businesses and services, as well as parks and open spaces. The timeline for developing the budget began in September of this past year. And many hours and meetings have been dedicated to ensuring that it is balanced per statute and that our funding obligations and priorities are met within the limits of revenue realities. The proposed budget includes one full-time position and two part-time positions as part of the new solid waste collection division. Recognizing that there are staffing needs to address growing demands, I recommend funding a staffing study to analyze and determine new positions necessary and when these should be funded over the next five years. This will allow the city to be strategic in adding human infrastructure to meet increasing service demands and to calibrate staffing and revenue relative to the growth the city is experiencing. I'm recommending that there be no tax increase and that the ad valorem tax rate remain at sixty-one cent per $100 of valuation. The budget represents a slight decrease from the current year general budget, fun, uh, general fund budget. As in the past, more than 100% of all property tax revenue to be collected by the city will be required to fund the police and fire departments alone. These two departments are projected to cost more than 11.5 million dollars while property tax collections are projected to be only about 8.7 million dollars. Major projects and expenditures in the general fund in the proposed budget include police adding three vehicles for sworn officers, protective equipment being purchased for police, and Parks and Recreation master plan continuing. Um, and enhanced NeoGov application for human resources to expand staff training and professional development opportunities. And as mentioned earlier, we'll also recommend developing a staffing plan to analyze staffing needs over the next five years. The primary focus of capital spending in the proposed budget is on street maintenance. An improvement which is the top area, uh, and, well, I'm sorry, let me start over on that. The primary focus of capital spending in the proposed budget is on street maintenance and improvement, which is the top area for improvement cited in the recent community survey and a primary goal set by city council. The 1.3 million dollars allocated for street maintenance marks the city's most substantial investment in this area so far. The proposed, I propose that this funding level or higher be maintained in coming years to establish a comprehensive five-year strategic improvement program. By ensuring ongoing dedication and focus on street maintenance, we can achieve substantial enhancements to this vital infrastructure. Additionally, I recommend the development of a five-year street improvement plan this year to guide the execution of this program. This is the first year, as you know, of a five-year capital improvement plan, which I am recommending be adopted with this budget. Much of the funding in this budget for street maintenance and the CIP is provided by either combining funds from the previous year and from fund balance. And therefore, funding at adequate levels to implement these priorities is not sustainable in future years without additional revenue. It should be emphasized that funding these priorities over the next five years will require wise utilization of the anticipated revenue increase from next year's reevaluation of property. The water and sewer budget is proposed of over 15 million dollars, which is an increase of 1% over the current fiscal adjusted budget. The proposed budget recommends no increase in water rates and a $2.90 fixed monthly rate in sewer rates to recuperate payments for phase three of the I N I project. The electric fund has a proposed budget of over 33 million dollars, which represents an increase of just under a half a percent over the current budget. It includes a wholesale rate decrease that is, that the city is receiving from the North Carolina Municipal Power Agency One. The average residential and small commercial electric customer will experience a 1% decrease in their electric bill. The solid waste collection fund is proposed of 2.6 million dollars for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five, and this will be utilized to fund the new contract for solid waste collection. The solid waste collection fund has been moved from the general fund to a self-funding enterprise fund this year. In all funds, the budget provides for compensation increases in the cost of living adjustments for COLA and merit pay. The COLA, which would go into effect after budget adoption, is recommended at 2%. Merit pay has also been funded as part of the city's performance evaluation program so that in total, 3.5% is provided in the budget to address various compensation needs. Last year, we began implementation of an annual study of salaries of positions for one-third of the city's workforce and adjusted where needed. This budget recommends that we continue in year two of this three-year study as funds have been budgeted to make market adjustments where necessary. In closing, I want to extend my gratitude to the mayor and the city council for their valuable contributions to this budgeting process. As well as to the dedicated members of the city's management team and all staff for their efforts in crafting their departmental budgets. I'd like to give special recognition to our finance director, Jacob Weevil, for his significant role in guiding development of this budget. Thank you and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Council have any questions?
When all is said and done, how much will we have in the unappropriated fund?
The fund balance?
I think that's a question we probably need to let them have for us at the budget retreat, yeah.
Right, we can get that information for you.
Hearing that further?
Well, not that, because we were just giving this to us.
Yeah.
I've got a lot of notes on here, but I will ask them, I will be kind to ask them next week when we're together.
Okay, thank you.
I will not do it now.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes.
Moving on to eleven E, induction, introduction of new staff, uh, Mr. Rhodes.
Uh, I would like to introduce, uh, new staff from the administration, uh, department, then I'm gonna, uh, let, uh, Lisa Kaiser introduce new staff in Parks and Recreation. But I would, uh, just really excited to introduce our new city clerk, Christina Brown. I know that many of you have met Christina and she is just, uh, she's been here a week and, uh, she's already proven to be invaluable. So we appreciate you being here, Christina.
Welcome.
Welcome, welcome, welcome. So I am happy to introduce Danielle Dobbs Jackson as the Assistant Director of Parks and Recreation. And I'm gonna turn it over to her to let her tell you a little bit about herself.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, again, I'm Danielle Dobbs Jackson. You can just call me Danielle. We'll just keep it simple. Um, I know I look young, but I've been in the field for about 15 years. Um, I'm super excited to be here with you guys tonight and to be part of the new team. I'm really excited about all the things that you guys are doing and I hope that I can, um, effectively, um, add more to that. And I'm just really excited and encouraged to be here. So thank you.
Thank you, welcome. Coming around the table, Mr. Rhodes.
I don't have anything.
Mr. Townsend?
No comment.
Mr. Bramlett? Mr. Aldrich?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Hall?
Nothing. No, I've sent, I have sent a lot out to, we'll see if we get answers.
Only, only thing I have is I guess you noticed, or maybe you haven't noticed, we didn't, we haven't done anything on the catalyst grant program this spring. Reason being, um, also I'm sure you noticed, city manager retired, the assistant city manager's interim. And that was a lot of his time taken up with that. We rolled this out, uh, two years ago. It was done in first quarter, which in hindsight is the worst time of the year probably to try and do this. Um, it took, or it's taking a huge amount more staff time than I realized that it would. Both on Darren's time and on Lindsay's time and Joyce's time to walk these people through these applications, to follow up on them. So what I'm, I've talked with Darren, talked with Lindsay also about kicking this up again in the fall and use this time. We're through, but, well, we'll. We're through bu, well, we'll be through budget here shortly. It's after the end of the fiscal year, so it'll make it easier on finance to manage. Um, fall is a better time to do this. And I I just think it'll work a whole lot better. And with everybody's plate full this spring, there was really not any way to get it done, uh, so I didn't push it. We've had some changes on the committee. We've got to refill those and take a look at that, review the um the guidelines and everything. But the other thing is we need this time to follow up on the ones that have already been awarded, because you know who some of them are and you know some of them haven't been completed for various reasons, for uh getting people to do the work, for regulatory things. We don't know, but we need that time to follow up so that we can give that feedback back to Yori Bank, which is one of our funders. And also for us just to be um uh good stewards to make sure the money's going where it should be. So I just wanted to give you all an update on that in case you'd wonder why uh nothing had been done on that this spring. That's it.
Mr. Drive?
Um, if you haven't been by Courthouse Plaza lately, it has really started to transform into a very beautiful park alleyway. If you haven't been, I'd suggest go by, take a look. Uh, you can probably see city staff working out there. We appreciate all their efforts in starting to pull this project together.
Mr. Hunt?
No, sir.
May, maybe I do have something. I'll just encourage folks to go to Market Station every Thursday night during the month of May and June at seven-thirty. Um, this is still, this market, Thursdays at Market Station is still being sponsored by Parks and Recreation. Um, there has been a change of staff at Parks and Recreation, so the the same people may not be running it. I think there were some uh people were scared about that last week, but every um every Thursday night, um, this past Friday night was um our second Food Truck Friday, and it was probably the most people that I have seen at any one event at City Lake Park since we've been doing this for the past three years. Um, the food trucks were, there were probably eight to ten of them there, and to how many? I don't know how many, but they were full. The lines were there for three hours apiece. I must have had ten of them, I don't know. But it was fabulous. I think people have got, the word is out and people were there, not just from Albemarle, but from around the county. And the last thing I'll say is that if you have not gone to the History Museum, you need to do it for yourself, to go to the History Museum and see the exhibit of the arts in Stanley County for fifty years. Uh, one of the things that saddened me greatly was seeing newspaper articles from not too long ago mentioning people who had been leaders in the arts who are no longer with us. So please take take fifteen minutes and go over there. It's there all summer, but go on and do a couple of times. Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion. We go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen eleven A, one, three, four, five, and six confidential and privileged information. Consult with city attorney, economic development, real estate, and personnel.
I'm moved. I will see you tomorrow. I'm moved.
Second.
Councilmember Dry, put the motion, and Councilmember Hunt make the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Uh, coming out of closed session, we have nothing to report. Did you want to do the police department number that you have?
Oh, yes, sure. Okay, this is the report from uh Anderson Drive um, from February first through March thirtieth. Thirteen vehicle stops, five citations, one arrest, one written warning, and seven verbal warnings.
Was that through March or April? I thought earlier it was April.
March fifth through April thirty-first.
April thirtieth is what I have here.
Okay, now, I say, so it was, okay.
Yep.
I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn until May the fourteenth, four P M for a budget work session, and it will be held here, not the Waddell Center. Motion by Councilmember Aldridge, second by Councilmember Hunt. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.